Okay, I'll hereby call the special call meeting on Thursday, March 12th at 5:00 PM. It's an order, time is five, 01:00 PM. Ms. Allen, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilwoman L. Griffin.
Here.
And Councilman S. Griffin.
Here.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
And Councilmember.
I'm going to sit here.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, did we have a notification posting of the meeting and agenda?
Yes.
In accordance with law. Thank you. All right, at this time, councilmembers, approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Griffin. That's been properly motioned, saying that we approve this agenda tonight. End of discussion. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
All of those, the ayes have it. Stan, if you can bring a plate.
Yeah, thank you.
Join Councilman Brock in the place of allegiance and the prayer. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this gorgeous day. Thank you for the gorgeous days that we've had, and we ask that you give us gorgeous days ahead. Please bless this council as we go forth and do the town's business. Please protect us from the many illnesses that are out there and keep us safe throughout this weekend and all the weeks ahead. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move to discussion item. Reason why we called today's meeting was the Coronavirus Disease 2019, otherwise known as COVID-19. Possible effects on public gatherings and town hall operations. And I might add that we've had quite a few inquiries to town hall, as well as myself, and I'm quite sure the councilmembers had inquiries from citizens of Blythewood about what we were doing to prepare for or mitigate against the coronavirus. So I decided to call a meeting today on public record to discuss these issues, as well as larger public gatherings. Like we're going to have this weekend, we have the Doco Film Festival gathering scheduled, as well as the Rib Fest sponsored by the Greater Blythewood Chamber of Commerce in the park. And so we had some concern. So we thought it prudent to come together in a precautionary measure, learn a little bit about this virus, how it may or may not affect Blythewood and the area's citizens, but more importantly, to alleviate any fears we may have about gatherings in Blythewood. I know many states have declared public emergencies. The state of North Carolina, for instance. I know our governor is closely watching it, and we'll hear about that more from Councilman Sloan Griffin in a second. And just trying to get information out for the public to make educated decisions on what they'd like to do. So it's my belief as mayor, and I'm not speaking for the council, they can speak for themselves, that individuals with appropriate information can look at it and as educated citizens of the town can make a decision if they decide to go to church, to public gatherings, go to send their kids to school, what have you. They're at their will to make those decisions on their own. But certainly, I do not want to impose a delay or halt in any public scheduled event that we have already. It's up to individuals to make those decisions, and I respect them either way. But I do not feel a need right now personally to discontinue anything we already have scheduled. So with that, I'll open the floor to the councilmembers. Councilman Brock, would you lead this place in your comments?
Okay. Kind of put me around the spot there.
Okay.
I really have much to add to that. Based on what I've read and some of the news reports, it seems that, you know, you've covered it fairly well. I also agree that I don't see the need to have a knee-jerk reaction and immediately cancel events. As I stated in the email earlier this week, I'm the least concerned with the outdoor events. It just seems like common sense should prevail. If you're sick, stay at home. You know? Let everyone kind of make their own decisions. I don't see any need to react such as that at this time.
All right. Councilman Baumann.
I think you all got an email from me earlier today, how we're handling it at the South Carolina Baptist Convention. I sent it to each one of y'all and our town administrator. I think it's just good hygiene, you know, you're sick, stay at home, you know, control what you do. We put sanitary stations outside of every entrance. Everywhere you go, there's a someplace to wipe your hands. You know, we got the automated ones, you just put your hand under it, it comes right out in your hand. Put them in every entrance, every exit of the building. We've got them everywhere, asking people just to take care of yourself. And I think that's about all we can do. I mean, we're grown adults, we know where we can go and stay at home. Or, you know, if you want a shelter in place, that's one thing. We did ask some people if they could, not essential, and they could work at home. You know, they had their workstations at home. And they want to do that, they can stay at home and work. So, I mean, the ones that are able to do that, if they feel like they need to stay at home and do it, we're allowing that to happen. You know, they all can hook to the network and work from just about anywhere. So I think as a town, if we have the capabilities and it gets that bad, our employees can work from home, as well as the ones at the South Carolina Baptist Convention. But that's just the way we're handling it. We're following the health guidelines that are put out by DEHAC. We're following the direction of our governor. And we don't want to overreact, but we don't want to underreact, you know? So we're just trying to be prudent in everything that we do. So I think as town members, I think, and Councilman, that's all we can do here.
All right, thank you, Councilman Griffin. The end.
I ain't sure about that. All right. Well, my opinion is, I'd like, I don't want to put anybody into a panic mode, but at the same time, we're going to err on the other side of caution. As I stated when I sent you back the email, I think that we should actually take a look around and see what's happening around us. I've been very close to watching what the government is saying and what other governments are doing. And they're leaning more to, okay, let's shut down because we don't want a rash of incidents to go at one time. And in the event that it happens, we're not prepared to handle it. Even the state's not prepared to handle it unless you've got something new for me over there. The state's not prepared to handle it with the test. So I'm leaning a little bit more to maybe we might either err on the side of shutting, shutting down, rather than it cause a panic. I mean, I understand, you know, I watch the NBA, I watch all this money revenue, they're shutting it down, simply because it only takes one. There's not enough information to determine how you're going to get it, where you're going to get it. And everything that we're saying about the sanitizers and having these stations, and wash your hands, all that to me would have been common sense in the beginning. Ever since then, it ain't been the case. So to think that because we got this out and say that we're going to put them out there, they're going to actually go and do it, that's another thought. I've been hearing some of the stuff that actually works more on people my age and older, pre-existing conditions, rather than the younger people. So, you know, I don't really know what's happening. All I do know is though, is you got a larger chance when you get a lot of people together. And you really don't know what you're dealing with from that standpoint. So in the beginning, I was saying, okay, let's roll with it. Now I'm kind of torn between, do we want to put ourselves in a position to have a rash of COVID-19 around? But I'm here to hear what a statesman here who works in the department got to tell me and see what the government, what the state's saying.
All right, so for the good of the public, Councilman Sloan Griffin will speak next, and he is an emergency management professional. And he has liaison and ties to the governor's office. And he's been in multiple meetings over the past few days about the virus threat. So at this time, I recognize Councilman Griffin Jr.
Oh, yeah. Appreciate it.
What?
Oh, okay. What are you talking about? Appreciate it, Mayor, and the council and all the members here today. Being that that is my background and tied into so many meetings and conversations from not just local, state, federal, my partners, my camera mates in North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, we've had conference calls like every two days. We don't want to create the environment for panic. We don't want to do that. As the governor said on Monday, I believe, and Friday, wash your hands and things like that is the best defense against it. We err on that, but we know folks don't use common sense. In my building, there's probably 1,200 people in the building all day long. We have kept flu-like protocols throughout the building, throughout other buildings that we manage statewide. We have increased daily cleanings in those buildings. Even in headquarters, we have folks maintenance. If you're not busy, you're busy. You have a rag, Lysol, cloropt, you're watching elevator buttons, door handles, every and anything that you can touch, touchable surfaces with your hands. We do have protocols in place that if you're sick, go home. And that's a no joke thing. We know folks want to come to work anyway. They want to sit there, you know, they love their job, they want to show up, they want to do their job. And we understand that. We understand too, that some don't have PTO for whatever reason, whether they abused it or something, really happened and had to use it. So we took steps to protect our employees first and foremost. All our fleet vehicles have Lysol kicked in. When we ran out of Lysol, because there's still some shortages somewhere, I'm talking about trying to cover 6,000 employees, an ungodly amount of fleet vehicles. We went to cloropts and spray bottles, providing that in vehicles. But, you know, we also gave some leniency and flexibility to staff that if you're sick and you really want to work, take your laptop, everything, go home, we make sure you have VPN access to do your job from home. All of us carry cell phones, just about in my agency, so we're doing that. But we have transitioned to a coop-like mentality. So I work directly under Secretary Hall. So in her absence, I'm there with the governor and all these briefings and other meetings, even with her there, I'm there right now. So we have looked at, you know, if something happens to the top edge one, what are we going to do? So we began those conversations yesterday. And not to go too deep into that, we probably will be looking at creating a massive telework policy. If one person, the theory is that one person in this building, with 1,200 people get it, and it takes three to five days before any symptom shows up, every surface that they touched, you know, if we miss cleaning, if I'm talking to Brock in the hallway and I sneeze and he kept just any little thing, so we're looking at it, one person's affected in that building. DEHAC's policy is that everybody is in quarantine that was in close proximity. So if any one of us in this room has it, and you find out in two days, we all in quarantine for 14 days, whether you catch a fever or not, is to see, do you turn asymptomatic? So we want to keep those things in mind moving forward. But with the cancellations, as I said in the email, we need to follow the heartbeat of the folks around us. Because we're sharing information as quickly as possible as a statesperson or partners in this. DEHAC is leading it. So when we start seeing Columbia cancel St. Patrick's Day, NCAA, MBA, all of these avenues canceling, and it's just on the precaution that, hey, we don't want to take that risk. If you look through the packet, you see the closest county to us with affected folks, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
All right, we'll jump right into that now. That's just a quick outline. So this is something that I had to do for working. So I followed the same outline. Columbia kind of has the same trend too, so. But just in summary with the cono- coronavirus, COVID-19, it's a respiratory illness that spreads from person to person. We know it was first identified in Wuhan, China. Symptoms may appear in two to 14 days after exposure, to include fever, cough, shortness of breath. The first case in the United States was discovered in January, the 21st of this year. As of March the 1st, I've updated this before leaving. We have 987 total cases in the United States, 29 deaths. Currently, 10 cases are confirmed in South Carolina. Three in Kershaw, one in Charleston, four in Camden, one in Spartanburg, and then Castor. That's the other piece. I'll pause there for a second. You know, if we're doing any events, we have to be mindful that we're being travelers around. And being that all these other events are canceled around us, it's going to push more people out to do something. It's good and bad. It's good for the town, getting more people in to take on the festivities, but we might end up bringing that one person in, that one seed to spread it. Following on some recommendations, you know, there's currently no vaccine for COVID-19, although Georgia and some provider in China is rapidly trying to speed that process up. So prevention activities, we all seen this on the news, avoid close contact with people who are sick, avoid touching eyes, nose, mouth, stay at home when you're sick, cover your cough, sneeze with a tissue, throw the tissue in the trash, common sense things. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Wash your hands often with soap for at least 20 seconds. We got things up in the office in the county ABCs, you know, put up on the mirrors, nothing, just to give a tune to it. But if soap and water are not readily available, use alcohol-based hand sanitizer, at least 60%. We've got some here. So some of the federal strategies that's out there right now is containment, tracking, isolation, your normal piece of trying to cover all things in. Congress passed an $8.3 billion budget package. We're unsure, even from my standpoint in the state, how that's going to be divvied down. So we've been telling everyone to keep a cost of everything that you do, let's say regular. So you have to think canceling these events, you know, there's going to be claims filed and things like that down the road. So we need to keep a track of all of them in our Richland County with the declaration. It's signed by the governor for that. As I said, not to go into too much of the federal stuff, you know, that bill was signed on the sixth. HHS has announced support, so it's going to come in through a different funding trail from the Stafford, from the Department of Federal Response. The CDC is directing folks to their website. As you've seen on the next page, you'll see that we in the state, we have a robust has access to this. I'll get to it in a minute. I want to pull up the DEHAC website. Oh. Thank you, sir. DEHAC is the leading agency for this response here. The CDC has approved DEHAC for initial in-state testing. So DEHAC has the capability of testing upwards of 100 a day, test samples there. There are mechanisms put in place. Just to talk about that real short, real quick, if you go to the doctor and they say you have those symptoms, that's the only way for them to pull those samples. Right now, they're working on co-pay reimbursements and things like that, because you still have to pay that. However, MUSC has pulled... MUSC has gracefully granted free. So I want to make sure everybody knows this in town, that if you think you have COVID-19, MUSC on their website, and you see on our town website, we got the information up there, and MUSC should be the last link down there. Click on that, MUSC, yep. We'll fix that broken link. Understand, a lot of this stuff is changing every day, so when they put that out, things may change, and we've been corraling some of that information too. But MUSC, if you Google it, they're doing a free virtual urgent care clinic. You have to put the promo COVID, C-O-V-I-D-19, and it's free. It won't charge you, your co-pay or nothing like that. They're covering that for free right now. We are the only state that is doing some type of free service like that. So we're leading in that. DEHAC also has a care line open, so if you have any questions about that, they're instructing everyone to go to the website, click on the links for COVID-19. Gives you all the information, symptom chart. If you need to talk to someone, you can call 1-855-472-3432. That's the care line. So should be covered 24/7 on the care line right now. So let's talk about some strategies, and this will open up to discussions, how we feel, we need to be in direction in the town. This strategy here comes out of the city of Columbia and part of their interjoint task force on COVID-19. You know, education is number one, so if we have links, we have posters up on the website, we're creating the environment for education, communication, so we know who and where to go to. So even if a citizen come here and need that information, we have that information available to pass on to them. And, you know, I'm sure we will allow them to call the care line if needed from here. So prevention, we are taking these preventive measures in-house with cleaning. We have an approved list that I sent Mr. Cook to the CDC on products that's been tested for this, to kill the bacteria of the virus. But we also, like I said on the website, it should be listed to give the general public prevention to preparedness. That's what we're doing now. We're having a conversation to figure out what we need to do as leaders in the town moving forward. I don't think we need to get into establishing work groups or committees. I think that we can take care of that pretty quick and regularly here. Logistically, in the supplies, I'm sure all this stuff will become far in between in toilet paper too, I've been told.
Right.
You got plenty of toilet paper?
No, I'm not worried about it.
I know you're okay. Well, come to my house, I got plenty of toilet paper.
No. Well, all right, fair enough. If you're riding around in that 20-foot vehicle, you should have been.
I'll feed you for a couple of weeks.
Oh, man, that's a deal right there.
So, one last page here. So just, you know, quick preparedness actions, you know, creating the environment for public media messaging on our website. We're working on things like YouTube and stuff here. And we could access Richland County and rely on them if we need to for some of their public TV access of their communication with employees internally, particular steps. We've done great on that, including safety messages. We got hand sanitizer and things in place. All that's left is to think about those contingency plans with employees internally. You know, we get to that point where we, you know, someone's sick and you're wanting to do. Because if one person, one employee here gets sick, the whole place is shut down. And then we need to think about a deep cleaning process in the building, things like that. We need to think about over at the manor the same way. A lot of public in and out of there too. So a lot of those measures, we have buildings here in the park, we need to think about that, the bathrooms, all the playground equipment, all of that out there. So we need to really think about that. And we probably should, you know, think about if one person in here does. God, I hope it don't happen. It's a positive on, you know, how are we going to continue operations in this building? Some of us might need to learn some of the rules and, you know, just carry the fort on and I could be Mr. Cook one day, you know, carry it on. So those are things that we're doing on the government side. We're government, you know, so if the state doing it, you know, it's something that we need to eye on. So at that moment, I'm done. Just short, sweet, simple. I don't want to get into how the breakdown molecules and all of that is, you know? Just open up and, you know, let's discuss this and figure out what we need to do, what's best for the people. I received a lot of messages, just like some of y'all probably. I got a message today, it's long, but it's touching, that, you know, basically, we need to really think about the people in the town and do what's best. Protect us as leaders and our families so that we can lead this town. That's it. We'll be right back, sir.
Well, appreciate it. Thanks for that feedback. And he, I like the contingency plan. I'll get with Mr. Cook and we'll discuss it, but I'm sure he's already thought through. Somebody gets sick, he's already told the employees, here, stay home. We'll find a way for you to telecommute, you know, telework, because obviously, they're not going to punish an employee because they get sick of the virus. So give them something to do that is worthwhile for the town while they're out. And, but you did bring up a good point at the end there, public gatherings, large public gatherings. Let me just open it back up to the council about your thoughts. I know we want to be cautious, but we don't want to be overly cautious. But again, individuals have the self-determined right to make a decision to go to these or not, as long as they're informed of the, everything that's out there. The information is laid out for us. We're going to put it right on our website, so if any citizen does not want to call, but they want to go search online, they can see this information that you provided here and make a decision. Again, that's kind of the way I've, I've been thinking about this over the last 24 hours. And if I feel personally threatened at my family, then I would stay home. If I don't see that as a big threat. And again, how many, seven cases in South Carolina?
Yeah, ten.
I thought it was 10. And they're scattered throughout the state. So you have to keep that in mind also. And then Councilman Griffin also said a great point. You have events like the Blythewood Artist Guild have already announced that they're going to postpone their meeting. So that means there'll be people with free time on their hands and they're going to want to come do something, so they're going to go to the next event. But seeing as how the Doco Film Festival and the Rib Fest are going on, and this is largely, if not 100% outdoor activity, so you keep that in mind. Whereas, you know, indoor activities, closed quarters, and then make a decision. Go ahead, please.
Also, opening ceremonies for DYBSL is also Saturday.
That's a good point.
So, you know, there are events that are, for lack of a term, continuing to go on. Just, I just want to add one thing, like the governor's actually said, don't close schools, don't cancel events. I would think that he would have some of the best advisors in the state, if not in the nation, before he made that comment. I understand why Columbia canceled the St. Patrick's Day festival, because you literally have people that are side by side, shoulder to shoulder. I don't see that as an issue out here. I don't see that at the film festival, although Mr. Smith might actually love that if that was the case. You know, I don't see that at DYBSL. I understand what you're saying about being cautious and employing the measures that you have to protect yourself, but at the same time, I don't see the, I personally don't see the need to hole ourselves up in our houses. When you're talking 10 cases in a state of, what is it, 4 million people?
One million.
It's, you have the better chance of catching the flu, and the flu flew, and dying than this. And, you know, I say this as a 39-year-old guy in relatively good health, and it's not really impacting my demographic. You know, extremely, that's right.
That's right. So. Good point.
You know, if we're going to look to our leaders for... You know, if, if we're gonna look to our, our leaders for guidance, and this is what we're saying, I would, I would have to operate under the assumption that they do have better information than we do. And if we take the information that Councilman Griffin has given, which is flowing down from D HAC and those leaders, then I think we use that to, to make a decision.
My head's met guru for emergency services called me yesterday and said that, um, Richland County's instituted their new protocol. Where you call in now, they're call taker, you have a checklist, you know, they ask you so many questions. If you check so many of those boxes, they send a dedicated unit to you with two E M Ts or paramedics and a driver. The driver stays isolated, doesn't touch the patient. They come with Tyvek suits on, respirators, take them in, they took the first one in the other night, um, tested negative. But they go back and they have to decon, they, the Tyvek suits, they're using four oh nine. Richland County's decided that four oh nine is one of the best things to, to decon with. So they're decon totally, they decon the units, I mean, so they've already got, Richland County's got that protocol in place. And that protects their, their people and it protects the person they're, they're transporting, you know. So, I mean, yes, they're taking precautions. So if you do call and you think you have the symptoms and you check those boxes, you're gonna get that dedicated unit to come to you and take you to where you need to go and get treated. But, I mean, he says that they're just doing the same thing that Councilman Griffin told us, is they're just, you know, cleaning everything. All touchable surfaces, when you think about deconning the inside of an ambulance, you know, the whole way. Which is no different, they've deconned plenty of, you know, ambulances in the day. And you can decon for bloodborne pathogens, it's just as easy as you do, you know, for this. But that's one of the things that Richland County's got in place. And, you know, I've got plenty, like, you know, in the business too, but not anymore, but my friends are keeping me updated what's going on. And like I said, they said just be prepared, be cautious, but don't be, you know, scared to leave your house, I mean.
So, I wanna echo back, it's not, it's not a driven fear factor piece of it. In my office, we're not driving that. I'm right there, when the governor making that decision, I'm right there. We're not driving saying, close schools. We're not saying, hey, go buy up food off the shelves, it, the world, we ain't, we ain't, we're not preaching that message. Uh, we're just preaching the message, hopefully that we can get common sense things that people should be doing. My fellow counsel brother here, he could tell you, firemen in the firehouse, you have to tell some grown men to take a shower. So it is, it, a lot of this stuff is not common sense, but we're preaching this to, to drive it in. That's why you see the governor on the press conference, what he got. He get finished, this is what he doing. Um, so, um, that's what we're driving, so we don't want to create this mass panic. Because what would happen is, we would start to tax Richland County, Greenville County, Lawrence, these smaller counties that don't have the resources to decline like that, to come respond like that. Um, it'll be Richland County going to, to, to help Lawrence, Newbury, or Dillon or something like that, in that event.
And you see what you're talking about, and I'll tell you an example, is you can't find, you know, a sanitizer anywhere. But also, Richland County were looking to Airgas to give them their Tyvek suits. Airgas said, no, we're holding on to them. Well, they have to go all the way through the top and finally they get a phone call, no, you can have all you want. Cause now you're putting, y- you know, you're putting our people at risk by denying us a service that you sell. Now, are you trying to jack the price up on Tyvek suits, you know, to make money? Are you trying, are you worried about the public health thing? So finally, it took a couple of hours and finally, emergency services got the phone call. You come down here and you can get all the Tyvek suits you want, you know, because technically a Tyvek suit's a one-time, you know, you wear it, you dispose of. You know, you, you decon it so you don't touch it when you get out of it, but you don't decon it to use it again. You decon it to get rid of it. So, I mean, it's just things like you said, fear-driven, don't you, they're hoarding stuff. Same things when a hurricane hits, price jack up. Well, I mean, you have to, you have to be prudent and they just had to go through the, through the factors of, you know, look, you're putting the, everybody at risk. You're putting all these E M Ts at risk if you hold out on these Tyvek suits. So, I mean, I'm all for, you know, being cautious, but I'm also not for counseling anything that we've got planned now, uh, three weeks from now. If it's that bad that we all gotta be working from home, then, you know, so be it. But right now, I mean, I think if we do anything, that, right now, we're just gonna drive the fear factor up.
Well, that's one of the reasons M U S C enacted the free urgent care piece of it. Virtually, you can do it from your phone, computer, um, to drive that fear down, to keep folks from running to the doctors, the E Rs. Um, a lot of your E Rs are sitting up outside of tree yards. Um, so that's kind of an enormous amount of resources, um, to do that. So, uh, we're not pushing fear, but we're just pushing caution. You know, moving forward could be good for the town with the event. So, you know, in the next week, two, uh, three weeks from now, city, it could be a different struggle. We could be looking at two hundred people in South Carolina and then that makes us think differently.
Well, I think it goes without saying that we're gonna see case numbers increase before they start to decrease. If, there's, there's no question about this, that that's gonna happen, maybe not necessarily in South Carolina, but nationwide. But at some point, you're gonna start case, you're gonna see, you're gonna sort of bell curve, you're gonna see a peak and then we're gonna see it come back down. And probably gonna see it happen more so over in Asia and Europe before we see it here, we see cases start to, to trickle down. I do think if we overreact, I think we continue to stoke that fear. That, I went to a restaurant the other night and it was booming, it was packed. So I, I don't, you know, I don't think people around here are, are that concerned about it. Like, you know, like you said, in three weeks, a month, could be different. But also in three weeks or a month, it's gonna be much warmer outside and I believe the flu doesn't survive under seventy-seven degrees, is it, something like that?
Negative.
What's the, what's the?
There are people in Australia, Australia's in summertime right now.
Okay, well, that, I don't know.
And the hot, the humidity. I'm nearly, from what I understand, and I'm not a scientist, but the humidity and the high heat levels kill the virus off quickly. So that's why the forecast for this virus, at least in the United States, is as we move into spring and summer months, the cases should come down because the virus won't linger as long as it would in the long term.
From what I've been studying, all the professional doctors said that's the fault. That's what I said, negative.
That's what I heard.
It's, it's, because in Australia, it's summertime now and they're having their cases and it's still going up. So, that was the theory that when summer gets, you know, as it gets warmer, it dies out.
Right.
You've been tried and it's not right.
Well, if you believe what's being told, you know, even in China where it originated, you're seeing seventy percent or better, you know, sick rates that people are over it, you know. So, I mean, you know, it's gonna come down eventually, it's probably gotta hit its peak before it comes down.
And it diagnosed that eighty percent of the people that get it is gonna be okay, eighty percent. Now, the ones that, the ones that are, I was just looking at the thing up there, how's it spreading, and the ones that's gonna be most affected. As I said earlier, it's gonna be, uh, pre-existing and senior.
Oh, yeah, well, that's the same with the flu, the flu's, you know, does the same thing to the young and the old. I mean, it's just, if you're susceptible to respiratory illnesses and your immune system's compromised, then you should know to avoid, you know, large crowds and contact. I mean, the ones I know that have immune compromised, their system compromised, they're not going anywhere, you know. They're not getting out in big crowds, I mean, they know better, they've been dealing with it for years, so.
I'll, I'll say this, um, I hear what you're saying, but I just know that I just, I just got back in and there were a bunch of people who got respiratory problems that were at Carolina basketball game. We're fifteen thousand people in Greenville and they were at a basketball game, had respiratory problem. One of the things that we talked about is not striking a fear factor, and that's true. But we also are giving false, a false impression that this is okay. So here in South Carolina, as you were talking about, a lot of people don't think, well, it's not a big deal, you know, I'm not gonna really worry about it. Now, the question we gotta ask ourselves, how many cases does it take before we can say, we made a bad, we made a bad move? Um, how many, how, what does it, do we have to lose somebody, somebody have to die here in order to say that, okay, we made a bad move here? We should've went with it. How many deaths does it take to say it was good or bad? Well, if only one person died, like we talked about, two weeks ago, there was nobody in South Carolina. Now there are ten. By the time you get home, I was looking at the numbers that, uh, Sloan just put up. And, uh, that's, those numbers, I was about to say, those numbers are very different from what I saw. So the last night at twelve o'clock, it was twelve fifty, sixty-eight or thirty-eight people dead. And those numbers that Sloan said he had on his paper were not the same numbers. So the number is going up, every professional doctor that has anything to do with COVID nineteen, it says it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Now, I'm all for, now, know what we need to do, uh, and we got these events that's coming up this weekend, we just gotta make a decision. Uh, one, one thing I don't wanna do is the horse out of bun and then we try to close the gate. So we need to really make a decision and we're not gonna be like, uh, Congressman Brock over here, cause he, I mean, he's, he's young, he doesn't, he doesn't have a problem with it. That's no problem with that, but he's only one person, there's a bunch of people here at Greenville. And there are a bunch of people that's coming around, we just need to make sure that we're gonna make a prudent decision. Not only for our personal belief, but for the town and the people. And understanding, you know, one of the biggest things I said before, there's not been enough information to really know, to take a, take a different, like what we just talking about, the heat and it's gonna change all that, that's not, based on profession, that's not true. So we got that education, needs to be out there and it's like it's hot that day, we're not gonna spread it today because it's hot. No, but, uh, we, we just gotta look and see what's good for the town and make a, make a good decision. At the same time, I understand that we don't wanna push panic, uh, cause it's not a panic button. And eighty percent of people gonna be well. And it affects old people and pre-existing and, uh, uh, more elderly than the younger people and so where, where are we, what does that, where does that leave us?
Well, the numbers you used, let's make sure we're clear, eighty percent of the people who contract the disease will be okay.
Yes.
Not eighty percent of all people will be okay.
Oh, everybody.
Yeah, so, and then that, you know, and I absolutely understand what you're saying. And the excellent point you brought up, e- education, and that's why I wanna make sure we give everyone all the, all the opportunity to go from our website to the one they call us, where we can direct them to the accurate website, this is a good one here. You know, get the facts and then make your own decision as to if you come out. But, but Councilman Griffin brought up a great point, at what point is the, a risk acceptable? So, do you take an outdoor event that's gonna, and I don't know how many people will come to this, three hundred or three thousand? I have no idea. Do you have any estimate, Mr. Frye? What do you anticipate coming?
I'm the upper end of that scale.
Okay, three thousand, four thousand people, okay. So then, of that, you know, what, uh, are at risk? Who may have already been exposed in Lancaster County and coming down here to the RIB Fest? It's just things you cannot know. Who's gonna go to the Westwood, uh, the Doco Film Festival? And, and sit and watch films for, what, twelve hours or eleven hours, six, thirteen, thirty, just say it. But you, you see what I'm saying, it's hard to, to break it down in that level, but if you do cancel a event, one thing's for sure, that there will be a panic. Oh, even the little town of Blythewood has now closed Doco Park and we're not doing a RIB Fest. So that, that's the other hand. And that's why we called this meeting to talk about it, so I have a comment about it, if I welcome any of them.
I'm, I'm curious to, to hear from the, um, event, um, sponsors like Mr. Frye and Doco Film. To see what they take on it.
Mr. Frye, please.
Um, so, uh, the list of approved products, I mean, obviously I won't get it on the site, but.
You want?
Yes.
Can you send Mr. Frye the list of approved products I sent you? Mr. Frye, okay.
Alright, um.
Cleaning products.
For prevention.
We're not applying four oh nine.
Oh, that's all I need, four oh nine is the best.
Yes, sir.
Leave by example.
Yeah.
It's hard to find, it is hard to find.
Oh.
And yet, you can't find.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And we, we've obviously sourced out and to that effect, uh, let me digress just for a second. I spent, uh, twenty-plus years in the cruise industry and, and the early nineties, I was, served on the committee with CDC for the rewrite of the vessel sanitation program, which was very comprehensive and I agree with what's going on. And obviously we have norovirus and all those things that, uh, we're dealing with. And I have a very close colleague who is still involved in the industry. Uh, so, you know, I've been monitoring what could be doing that and there's what can be done, vaccines, et cetera. Does quaternary moniums qualify? Quaternary moniums?
Inspiron.
It's a disinfectant that is, I can give you a.
Is there a brand name, is there a brand name?
Oh, there's different brand names all around.
So that's a, that's a main chemical component in.
And let me say it this way, we, one of the things that we did this was years ago was the, as the basic format from dishwashing, for argument's sake, wash, rinse, sanitize and use a bleach and or steritabs or something of that effect. Well, we were able to institute, we got it through the CDC of, of making it a one-step process with bar operations. Where this quaternary monium, it, it cleans and disinfects at the same time. So, um, and I think I have some access to that as far as this weekend. Um, I have Queried and Steve, I don't know what specifically, we haven't discussed that in, in the bathrooms over there. But the porta-johns that were going, I said, okay, how much toilet paper do we have, how much hand sanitizer? And there is none extra available, um, from their standpoint. We went out and got extra toilet paper today because, uh, as a prudent measure. But, uh, if I have access to, if I can get just a part of it, in that, uh, sense of work, paper towels with quaternary monium would work because they're disposable items. And it's just dab on, is all you need. Well, if you, uh, quaternary monium runs at, well, I think it runs at twelve and a half P P M. Quaternary monium runs at, at twenty P P M, there's groups that, uh, hundred P P M. So those are, uh, and, you know, it all come at a cost and all that. I have access to, I believe, quaternary monium, I mean, it's hard to have that as an extra precautionary measure.
Right.
Uh, and so background gives me concern.
Right.
Um, and the, doing antithesis to that, this is an open-air thing where it's, on the cruise ship, everything is, is contained, self-contained. City water system and all that, so it didn't matter, you know, you just walk down the hallway and stays and or the wrong water, you, you're, it explodes. So, you know, we were very, very keen to all of those issues, uh, and it was very extensive, so, um, I am very keen to what's going on. Um, as you say, I don't know, but from all I'm hearing this thing and a bigger concern than I have is being able to control the crowd. Uh, we do have enough people down there, we have the M S, we have R C S D and all that, and volunteers. But, um, point was made out, made today that with the bill being like five points or whatever, been canceled. That may impact you in a positive way with what's moving forward. What I can do, and assuming the event goes forward as planned, we have M C's professional radio guy. You know, as we do the introductions and the hour of breaks or whatever, folks remember.
Make public service announcements.
To that effect, and, you know, um, we had discussion earlier today and to, tomorrow to give him a, a brief script of what we need to get done during the course of the day, so, um, that's our plan for the moment. Uh, and answer to your question, and, and Councilman Obama, no, no one is backed out there. I would say we're still on, we're still on. And quite honestly, out of one, out of probably forty calls from vendors and, and contestants that I've received today, one of them was thinking maybe it would be canceled, all the rest of them would.
That was canceled in Brock's question. Which was why?
Did you let it cancel?
Yeah. Anybody back out, you said no.
Yeah, that was on it, that even seemed tentative, let's put it that way. But, uh, I, yes. Um, but, I, yes, state, do, is there any, I'm sure there's nothing yet for in the bathrooms.
No.
I think, yeah. And access to anything else is there? Well, like I said, we asked the, the porta potty people, I've asked the waste people, uh, that we've got doing the dumpster or anything. Uh, to the point that, well, the guy says, okay, since Carolina Cup was canceled today, uh, they had an order that was gonna come in the Tuesday before, and so that was their breathing hope for, for that event. But, it's not gonna arrive until the Tuesday before Carolina Cup. That's not now. So, and I said, well, with cancellations, other events, if, if your standard fare of, of your potties that were leased out, can we steal from them? We don't have anymore. So, we're, we're at, we were able to get extra toilet paper. I definitely didn't get, uh, you know, the quaternary ammonium and I can have paper towels in addition to what's, what's there. As, and of course with the PSA. Uh, other than that.
Do you still have your webs- website up and running?
Website up and we, we, we had planned in, uh, our chair and I last night when we went through, there was, the release came from, from, uh, in town in D A, uh, from, from, uh, City Columbia. And with D A, uh, a modification of that, you know, to, let's be careful. I don't wanna take word for word or anything, but yes, it's going on. Please be careful.
Yeah, bring, we recommend you bring your own hand sanitizer, toilet paper. I mean, you can put whatever you want.
Yeah.
To remind the folks that they choose to attend.
Yes.
They make travel sizes of all that stuff.
Yeah. They don't open any other studios.
Hey, if I had a big market right now, we could make a fortune.
Tissue.
The little pocket ones, the little pocket ones in there?
I have another question that you could probably answer. Can I ask it? Uh, what about the, is there anything you can do about the airborne germs?
Not, not other than masks.
And the mask.
No.
I think I heard, I think I heard on the TV this morning that those, those germs last, airborne germs last up to three days in the air.
So, um, one thing about it is, let's just say I had it and I'm touching this table, I touched this. It's here for forty-eight hours at least, at minimum. It would live on the surface. So, if Brock comes back and touches this right here in the morning and rubs his eyes or do whatever, um, that interacts with the mucous membrane, um, then he possibly will contract it.
But, you can do nothing for it in the air. Instead it stays in the air.
It's just gonna move with the atmosphere. But, I mean, it's not gonna move and be like, oh, it passed Brock in the cloud type deal. This is like a normal sneeze type deal.
It said this morning, it's not, it said it's suspended. A doctor from, um, uh, Johns Hopkins.
And that error on the side of Dr. Linda Bell with DEHIC, and you could pull all her information off of DEHIC's website. On how they have tested that and everything. We have to make sure that we stay with the official source of us. There's gonna be a lot of people testing with theories and this.
Oh, yeah.
The state is doing, they, the, the state is on top of it. They're doing their thing out at the level, Park Lane. They, we're leading. Let me make sure that I make this clear. South Carolina is leading in a lot of the, um, advances moving forward, um, on this disease response. A lot of our mapping capabilities, uh, that coming from John Hopkins. Um, and we help do some of that stuff from our G I S units. There's a lot of other mapping tools that are out there that we're doing. So, we're tracking and, uh, we're, we're doing our best to mitigate that situation. But, we need to make sure we send all our information back to the DEHIC website. Um, they give you the checklist, they giving you the form to fill out, the pre-registration forms, so if you have to go to the doctor. I mean, they have really taken steps to be ahead, to help you and I and everybody else, uh, save time and energy along with M U S C. So, those are the two partners. Uh, if it don't come from DEHIC, we don't need to really pay attention to it. You know, yes, ma'am.
CDC still having to verify positive results from DEHIC, okay.
So, when you have a, it's a presumption positive and then it goes there and then it's confirmed.
Right, okay.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. And that takes about, average about forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight, okay. And, uh, cases in Camden, the four cases in Camden, all of those people were in close contact with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you taking questions from the general public?
Yes, sir. Okay, this leader as well? Yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was, uh, kinda waiting for a response to Councilman Griffin, the elder. What triggers are the board gonna put in place to say a threshold has been met for these schools? Cause that's where, for us, is the most important, is parents. Um, the schools, are we gonna wait for a cluster to be established? And what's the definition for a cluster for this town size, for us to start taking some sort of actual em- emergency management protocol? And then do we have one in place? And then who is the lead for that?
Right. Excellent questions. I'll just tell you right now all the answers. I'm taking my directives as mayor from the governor of the state of South Carolina. He has the resources. He has DEHIC, he has access to CDC, he has the emergency man. As soon as he says he does not advise gatherings of people, that's when I would take my cue to reach out to any organization I know in, in the town of Life Wood and outside of the town of Life Wood through this council to come together and say, we no longer want you all to hold this due to these factors. Obviously, Life Wood does not have the medical resources to make it. So, we will take, just like, when we have severe weather here in the town of Life Wood, I look to Rissin County School District too, and here's why. If it's dangerous enough for children to be sent home early because of roads, hazard conditions, I send employees home from here for the same reason. That we don't want school buses, I don't want employees driving on the same kind of road. That's the same mentality I take. If the governor says we need to stop gathering, we need to stop flying, that's, that's the information I would put out, in my opinion. Now, I would always gather this council to make that majority rule vote, cause we are a democracy here. But, that's what we're doing. Standing by. Right now, you heard, uh, Councilman Griffin, who does this for a living, he's with the governor every other day or so. And the governor says that now we have a viable threat in the state of South Carolina, that we should not gather, that's what I would recommend. And call this council together. And anything that this town funds or sponsors, we would then turn off based on that. Any other comments, please? That's just my opinion.
One, one more question if you don't mind. Um, I already talked about employees working from home. Um, have you stress test your, um, access? And my suggestion, just a suggestion come from a citizen, I would not wait until you have to. Because more than likely, you're gonna fail at it. And my suggestion, send one employee home next week, or maybe two, you, you know? And, and just stress test it to see how they respond to it.
Excellent idea. Mr. Cook, I'll involve you here. With B C three being our I T provider, have you worked from home or accessed from home the systems here?
Yes, I have. Uh, uh, critical, we can still pay bills, we can still check emails, so can log in from home. Uh, we're actually testing one of our employees that normally doesn't log in from home. We give him the instructions to test from home tonight. Um, I can get on my iPad and then check whatever I need. Uh, and, uh, you know, we can keep things going with our payroll and check an email from home if need be.
Right. Excellent. Okay, but that's an excellent point. Don't, don't wait until it happens. That's very good advice. Any other comments? And why, and so what was your name for the record, sir, and your address?
Uh, Marlon Hines, four nine eight Robinson Court, Life Wood, South Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to congratulate you all for being here and having this conversation. Because what I've found as someone new to creating events, you're all on your own. And, um, as all this has been going on, I've been thinking, oh, where can I get advice from? I can hear plenty of it on the TV and the radio and it's all conflicting. Uh, but where's, where's my local leader site? You know, when I saw this, that's why I misunderstood it, but then I thought about this meeting. I thought this is a really good idea, so I congratulate you for doing that. Um, an update on my, uh, our film fest, we're very different, uh, from the big one. Uh, we're at Westwood High School. So, we are in a high school. Um, Cheryl Guy is one of our board members and she told me, uh, she's been in touch with me frequently, tells me the schools are not panicking about this at the moment. Uh, that, um, everything that's going on in the school should be to standard. We cannot get hold of any of this stuff like anyone else, so looking again today, I think it'll be some weeks. Uh, we have had people pull out. Um, unfortunately, there's some of our more better-known people, um, Michelle Israe won't be coming. Um, well, she will get away, I'll come back to that. Um, also, uh, uh, what was I saying now? Uh, Daniels, Alex Daniels, uh, he won't be coming either, but he's in Hollywood at the moment. And a lot of people, you know, the studio to say, don't risk it, don't come. And they've got families. And Michelle's case, she's actually got, uh, people in her town that have coronavirus. However, uh, we will be using video conferencing to bring her in. So, she will be presenting to the conference, uh, as will others. So, we've had a few of those people drop out. Uh, still have Michael Myers coming, so be careful.
His immune system is tough.
You cannot kill him.
Case with that.
Yeah, alright.
We should talk. Yeah, buddy, I'll be fine. Um, I don't know, I have no idea how many people are coming. My, my guess is that, uh, people will be selecting out rather than in. On the other hand, I had a phone call this morning, uh, from, uh, a mother in Hilton Head who found on our website that we were holding this. She was really excited by it. She said, can I bring my sums up? So, they're coming up tomorrow and they know what's going on. So, we have no idea. Um, as for health precautions, um, I'm hoping that each school has what they have. Otherwise, I'm gonna advise people to the usual rules when we kick off. Um, you have to be responsible for your own behavior. Um, wash your hands. We have plenty of soap and water in, in all the restrooms and that's said to be more effective than this. That's about what we have. That's where we are at the moment. Now, tomorrow we have first night, of course, so this is really quite, quite basic to us and that's in the document, of course. Um, as far as we're aware, that's going ahead. That's what we do all day. That's why I can report out from where we are.
And so, as of right now, you feel comfortable?
Yeah, I think so. It's comfortable as one can be.
Right. I understand the folks coming from California and they've gotta fly and go through airports and different cities, different, uh, change of flights and things like that. So, I can, I can appreciate them not wanting to come, but I'm glad they can be comfortable saying.
Yeah, we're gonna have some of the students as well.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I wanna just add, add this part. As you can see, there's a couple of tents up out there. And you see the, uh, enclosed area on this one, that is for the judges. So, then we'll, you know, so obviously the integrity of the judging of this is for that purpose with a doorway. So, that is the enclosed area there. On the other tent, which is the beer tent, we have V I P section there, which we have, uh, windowed, uh, sightings on it, which we can't pull back, you know? But, for argument's sake, that's enclosed, uh, for V I P purpose, but, but with viewpoints. And if we, we, we need to pull it back, that's fine, you know, but everything else is open air from our standpoint. And not to scare you, buddy, as long as I think answering the question, every size of ball, pinhead, can carry about ten million germs, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanna talk about what's happening here at the manor, uh, cause we are a public building with a thousand to two thousand people, uh, going through that building every month. I have twelve events still left this month, twenty next month. Are there strategies, are there things we can do to show that the manor, the town of Life Wood, that we're sensitive to these issues? And we're trying to do the best we can to help prevent the spread of the virus. I, all I have at the manor is soap and water and bathroom. You know, I tried two weeks ago to get a lot of these, uh, uh, hand sanitizers and, and things like that. Another thing that I think about, I have a, we have a playground with hundreds of people on there all the time. Uh, we have an amphitheater now, that, you know, the kids are going on, on the amphitheater pad all the time. We don't really have a ramped up cleaning protocol, uh, going on for, uh, for the manor. I have one part-time staff member that only comes as needed. Uh, and, uh, so do we need to think about this and, and kinda up our game here on some of these things? And come up with a, a strategy and, uh?
Absolutely.
A schedule for, for this stuff.
Right. But, I mean, we, yes, we do. Go through, uh, preparedness, you look on websites. There's ways that I've seen just by going through the internet briefly, that you can mix a certain amount of Clorox and water. And you can wash your hands and that, if that's all you have. If you run out of soap, then you have to use it. Uh, you know, there's still ways to wash dishes the same way, you know, a little bit of Clorox. Like, there, there is a measured way to do it. I don't know it right off hand, don't get me wrong. But, there are certain ways we do. So, in the manor, uh, if we can make something that is adequate according to CDC and the professionals, so that if we do run out of soap or we don't have it, same with the Red Fest, same with the, the Doco Film Festival. Uh, if you run out of those materials, obviously, you're, you're not gonna find a whole lot of this, cause it's all sold out right now. So, what can we make and what can we put out there? What was that chemical you keep?
Well, it's quaternary ammonium, but there's a, a steritabs.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Steritabs work. I mean, that's essentially is what it is.
Yep. So, yes, we can do that.
And, you know, I've, I've got testing kits for all that, you know, for the P P M.
Is hand soap the same as liquid soap? As far as, you know, the, when, when my kids were in school, teachers said germs can live on hand soap. Not, you know, bar soap, I mean. And they always advised on camping trips to liquid soap and stuff like that. And I never took any attention to it. So, I was just wondering.
You're talking about sharing a bar soap?
Yeah. Well, I'm saying if somebody got germs on it, we were meant to believe that the germs could live.
Yeah, we don't wanna be sharing bar soap.
Well, there you go.
So, I think, I think.
Liquid soap.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. I think you'll find bar soap on the shoes versus some liquid soap.
Most of these are antibacterial and high level of alcohol, yeah. Sixty percent of them was.
Don't look, dishwashing liquid, isn't it antibacterial?
Well, it has to say it on there though, right? If you're the professional, it has, you gotta make sure you get the right one.
Yeah.
Uh, read the labels. In that list that you got, just see what's on that list.
We only need to put something in there about what qualifies as antibacterial.
Um, just to echo, I'm sorry, just to echo, as I mentioned that early, not the playgrounds that we do. That's why I said we need to keep up with costs. Cause at the end of the day, if we start spending money, uh, to clean the playgrounds on a regular basis, um, cause we wanna protect the health of all of us and we, we love the kids. That's why we got the playground there. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we strategize and come up with some type of routine cleaning piece of that.
Right.
Even if it's sending the employee out there with spray bottle.
Right.
One part Clorox, ten part.
That's right. You see, what comes to mind to me, being a, just a simple Life Wood country boy, is, you know, you got those, uh, yard fertilizers that you can screw into a hose and spray. Well, there's gotta be a way to make some Clorox water solution that will kill these germs and go out there and spray that equipment on a, in the evening when kids obviously are there, uh, but we just have to do the homework on it and figure out.
Yeah.
Or do they sell? Because you, like I said, you're not gonna find this stuff, but you, you can find Clorox all over the place.
Clorox.
Bleach, you should say bleach. Clorox is a brand name. Sorry, I'm giving them free advertising again. It's like Kleenex. Kleenex brand name, it's a tissue, but we all call it Kleenex before. Any other comments from anyone?
Mr. Hasstraw, have you noticed reservations from the people who have events booked at the manor at this point? Or is it still?
No, nobody's canceled.
Okay.
Nobody's.
Right.
What is your current cleaning policy for the manor? I mean, if, is it just ad hoc?
Oh, no, usually what we do is we clean after a large event or even a small event, but it's not like I have somebody coming in every day at a regular time. I could, you know, see if I can arrange that.
Should we look to contract with someone on a basis to come in on a summer, semi-regular basis to do a, a deep cleanse of the building? At least, until this threat is, is mitigated?
See, the thing about that is, you know, Steve was talking earlier, is that you're talking twelve events?
Twelve months.
Less.
Yeah, I mean.
So when you gonna, when you gonna, you gonna bring them in one time, twice? So if we set a schedule, that's, that's, that's my point. If you gotta do, if you're gonna do that, you gotta do it every time. I mean, it's, right now, there's an event that's in, in the NBA and games, they, after every game, they do the whole arena from top to bottom, right after the game.
Like, I mean, if that's the assurance that we need to give people, then, I mean, I think that's the right move.
So what we're, what I'm hearing is we're talking about hand sanitizer, the soap, it ain't got nothing to do with tables, the seats.
Door knobs.
Door knobs, everything else that goes on it. So when Steve asked the question, what, I'm looking at, okay, if you're talking about doing this, then the whole manor has to be sanitized, front door to the back door. How many days you say this germ carries, four to twenty-eight hours? So if we're doing that, then that has to be something that's going to be done on a regular basis, so you can't say, well, you got twenty next month, you say?
Twenty.
That's every time.
That's right.
Twenty thousand dollars. I'm just using a thousand dollars, it, the, the thing is.
Couldn't very well be.
The thing is now, if you get a contract to come in, because we looking at this, when I step, the, the rest stops, all the rest stops under me, the welcome centers, I, when I implemented that, I'm not going to say a number.
No, right, they automatically are going to charge time.
Automatic.
Because they're exposing themselves to that potential.
So you have to pay an employee to come in and clean, and it is to do that?
Yeah, right.
But then you gotta have all, you gotta make sure you got employees that's gonna do it and all the right material to, to disinfect it.
In the PPE?
That's right. That's right. You gotta have it posted, the whole nine yards, straight ocean.
And then we need to figure out how long the playground needs to be closed when we do spray it, then, you know.
Correct.
Need to close it off to the public, so. There's a lot of things coming to the contingency.
Yeah, sure. But even after this is passed, it makes sense to clean equipment and clean the tables and all that. Mr. Hasrock does have that within his authority to do that, so we can, we don't have to vote on that as a council, is what I'm saying. Unless it's some astronomical number that is over our bidding process. So good question. So I would say, Mr. Hasrock, come up with a plan, let, you know, let Mr. Cook know and he'll let us know and, you know, if we're increasing budgets, then we'll talk about that and, but certainly let's do that sooner than later.
I think, you know, we should at least have some basic protocols right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we have to hire professionals, companies on some type of regular basis, right, we'll look at that too.
Right.
So we can, I can be clear, uh, we're on pace that we're keeping everything at status quo.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about here, if everybody's finished with their input. And then now we move to action and we need to take action, what the action would be, so. The eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is, are we going to stop any public events in the town of Blackwood at this point? And we, we can talk about it, uh, we can make a motion, what have you, but, again, as I started in the open comments, I feel cautious, but I think it's up to individuals with the right information on hand to make a, an educated decision, do you want to come to one of these events or not? Again, the state leadership has not indicated it's a tremendous threat that we should stop all public activities. However, other states have, so you got to keep that in mind also.
I say we follow the governor's lead, if he calls us to cancel every, everything in the state, then we cancel. Governor says go, it's safe to go to events, it's the risk not that high, I say let's keep it going. I say let McMaster make the call on canceling everything.
Are you talking about just public events, town sponsored events?
Any public, anything that we control or contribute.
What was your ban?
What about a private, held at the ban?
Well, no, we have, well, if the governor said we should not do that, then I would not lease the, the manor out anymore until this threat has passed. Because then we are culpable for.
So if there's an event booked at the manor and we have to close, let us public, private.
That's right.
Wedding.
That's right.
And keep up with costs lost from that, the potential loss.
Right.
So you have people that have booked the manor.
Sure. We have to give that refund, we have to give the refund.
Right, the president has issued an order to the Small Business Administration to give loans to people who lose money caused by this virus, is what Councilman Griffin.
You would have to have the total and I can work with you on the spreadsheet, you said, how to do that.
So no fault of your own, you're following the orders of the officials from the Environmental Department and DEAC and you spent all this money, you can't get it back, well, now the Small Business Administration will come.
Will we set up like a crisis hotline for brides? Who's going to get canceled?
What's your cell phone number?
I will make sure they have your cell phone and your address.
Brides and mothers of the bride?
Does the town have event insurance?
Each event, I believe, is required to have event insurance.
I mean, is it, does it insure you for losing money?
I don't think this qualify, this would qualify for a claim under any event insurance. I've, I've had to require event insurance.
You can do it on trips and stuff.
That's travel insurance, that's a little different.
That would, that would be more so the, the person rather than the entity, which would be us. If I were like, if it's my wedding, I might have event insurance on my wedding, but normally that's not happening, we wouldn't have event insurance to cover that, we make them get it.
But I, I see your point though, I mean, if we had some kind of municipal and somebody cancels an event due to this outbreak, we would be able to claim the loss of that money.
I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree, I think that those claims would be denied, in this, this instance, this would, like, you talk about like acts of God and stuff like that, I don't know if this qualifies as an act of God or not. So, like, I believe that if I had event insurance for my event in August and the, the COVID-19 is still ramping forward and we decided to cancel, I, I believe if I filed a claim, that I would be denied, I'd say, even, you know. So, no, I don't think. You can file, but, yeah, but that, that has nothing to do with the facility that hosts the event, that has to do with us as an individual, then I, I would, or as an LLC owner, then I would make the claim to get reimbursed for the loss, the opportunity to cost.
Same thing like on the scholarship.
Yeah.
If you take out insurance on the scholarship and, and for whatever reason.
Oh, I know some of the scholarships who are not giving refunds on trips if you don't take them right now.
But that's, if you have travel insurance, then that would cover that in that instance.
There's a reason for that, we missing a reason. If you have a federal declaration that has called a public health emergency or staffed that under FEMA, then the, if, if the event come back to you, Brock, and you, they say, hey, Brock, we ain't doing no events, neither act of God, the venue is not doing hosting your event. So you qualify to make a claim, just like in my responses with Hurricane Harvey, other storms, you still subject to nationwide, whoever the insurer is, telling you, I'm not paying you. Then you got to go down a different avenue. That's a different beast to deal with, you still going to get some, it just don't, might not be what you want when you want.
And speaking with the event director at the Metropolitan Convention Center this morning, she, or this afternoon rather, she told me that if there was a state mandated closure of public facilities, then you could apply for a refund from the facility and then, you know, with no penalty. But then that, I don't know what the facility would do as far as making a claim for that lost revenue, because then the event wouldn't happen, because you canceled prior to the event happening. But yes, but that's only with a declaration, either a state declared emergency or federally declared emergency. We're not there yet.
I've made a note, we're going to look at this, we'll look at, you know, because it's, it's a, it's an excellent point. Because we are also liable, because when Steve books it, that's a set of money and if that individual or entity cancels, now we also lose on the income from that group. So it's worth looking at, just, you know, made a note, I want her to follow up on that. Any other comments? Is there any action we should take as a town council here in Blackwood for any, uh, public events?
I'm going to put this one up, I think that we need to look, you know, I, I think obviously these two events are going to happen. It's already knocking at our door. I think we need to look, you know, two, three weeks down, like we're doing this, and create our own trigger points. We need to come up with our own trigger points to say if we see this happen, uh, we need to, we need to start looking at doing A, you know, and then if this happened, let's do B or C. Uh, we need to create our own trigger points moving forward. But, uh, that's it, I'm not suggesting.
Good suggestion. But as of today, I don't think we need to take any action right now. Think we're doing all we can do. Again, as I started out, educate people as much as possible, direct them to the resources so they can make an educated decision on their own. I'm sure they are, and that goes without saying, but like we talk about common sense sometimes. But we've learned a lot from today, that disinfecting playground equipment, that should apply even if we don't have, you know, we should be doing that on a regular basis and, uh, the manor, uh, any public, because I know we have clean, cleanings in here, but, deep cleaning scheduled every now and then. And with some frequency would be very beneficial. Mr. Griffin? Your comments? Elder, I'm sorry, Councilman Griffin, the elder.
Alright, I, I'm, I'm going to say, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm going to go with the fact that we're going to move with this, with, uh, with the governor, however, I, I'm going to lean more toward the triggers because what the governor sees, he's looking at four or six counties and not just Blackwood.
That's right.
So somewhere along the line, we have to do what's right for Blackwood. It may be not what the governor is seeing or saying, because it's a, it's a different entity. So I do go along with Councilman Griffin over here about, we need to set up our trigger point. Now, when we're going to do that, especially hearing that, uh, everybody's saying it's going to get worse while it gets better, so are we going to do trigger points after it gets worse? Or are we going to work on the trigger points leading into it, because we don't really know where it's going? If we do the trigger points and it don't need it, that's great. But it's better to have it and not need it, and it need it and don't have it. So what are we going to do about the trigger points that says, okay, this is what we're going to do? Because that may be totally different when we're the governor, because that may be where, and, and I have a problem with him sitting in there with the governor, but the governor's making decisions for everybody, all the state. Not necessarily, I'm reading all the counties, and not necessarily, it may be what we, where we are in, in Blackwood.
That's a valid point.
Should we reconvene?
Week three?
Yeah, or next Tuesday, next Monday. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, how, how frequently would you want me to discuss these issues?
Can we officially then just deem this as a task force liberating? And, um, I'm cool with whatever, personally, I'm cool with it, just want to win. I think all of us want to know when.
Well, I mean, information is coming out, what, hourly or if not quicker? So obviously we can't meet every day, that doesn't, or it makes logistical, logistical sense, but, do you want to meet and, and, you know?
Monday, Friday, Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah, I don't know.
Monday a week.
Our next scheduled council meeting is twenty-third March, it'll be Monday.
But he's saying as a task force, we meet just like this every week or every, two days a week, I should say. How often does the governor, he's probably having hourly updates, but.
Yeah, this is a twenty-four hour round the clock, but we went from Monday, Wednesday, Friday to every day. So then we're doing some ad hoc things, like, um, he might call and they want to do a press conference. You know, so it, it's all based on changes coming down from DEAC. So if they discover more cases, a new county pops up, uh, you know, that alerts. So like, uh, trigger points, we internally in my agency, we have come up with trigger points internally.
Right.
We're following the heartbeat of the government. We, we're going to follow the heartbeat of the government, but the governor is looking at all counties.
That's right.
Alright, and.
And the huge economic, economic impact it will have if he shuts this down.
There you go, so, so you got the economic impact that will play into every and any decision. So we need to do like other agencies are doing, set your own trigger points immediately. I've been coming home at nine o'clock at night, because that's what we've been doing the past couple nights through the weekend, coming up with these trigger points ASAP. That's why we're down to now where we are looking at flexible out. The thing we have to remember too, if loved ones contracted, kids contracted, you know, if they close schools, what are we going to do? You know, I, so I don't know if we have to worry about that internally with staff, who has children or not, that's going to affect. So we have to move quickly because we don't know when. So I agree, we come up with these trigger points ASAP. And it might involve us working virtually from three sixty-five and then meet on a Monday, meet on a Wednesday or two days a week, but three sixty-five, we set up a thing and we just come up with trigger points virtually.
Yeah, I'd have to look at, look at how this is doing that, but you talking about like go-to meeting, when you say three sixty-five?
Well, not even go-to meeting, um, you can set up in one note or you can set up in Excel online.
My point is when three or more of us gather, it's, it has to be an official meeting.
Well, let's keep it like this.
Or unless we delegate, we delegate two of you to be the task force. I mean, that's another idea.
Let's keep it out, because I mean, we all got bright minds and things around the table and I don't want to tie up my mind, with, you know, what we're doing and say that, hey, do this, you know, we, we need to think from Blackwood's standpoint.
And then so do we meet once or twice, let's just look short term. Meet on a weekend, meet on Monday, is it early in the morning better than late in the evening? Based on you all and your schedules, and of course, what the public know, but.
Well, I mean, anytime, anytime a weekend happens, you got, you know, two days to digest information versus, you know, one day. Like, you know, we, we, we're current as of whatever, five o'clock, let's just say. And if we chose to meet next Monday, then we're going to have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three days to digest. And we can also get the feedback from the events too, to find out, you know.
They're working eight Sunday night and eight leftover ribs.
He's banking on no leftovers at all. I, I think that, I think that it would probably be a good idea to probably do standing Monday afternoon meetings.
You do it with five o'clock.
Five o'clock Monday?
Prefer not to run till six thirty-five.
And we can go day by day, so we can meet Monday and have that meeting decide the next meeting, as long as we get a twenty-four hour notice to the public.
Well, let's give some homework then, so that we can, you know, that we jump right into action, so we don't be here till seven o'clock.
Right.
I suggest that we all come up with things that we think will be triggers to move certain things. If we categorize things that say, well, if Richland County gets a confirmed case, how would that look, you know, with one to five or one to ten and then, you know, ten to fifty? Fifty to a hundred, I think we need to start looking at that and then think about where that case is.
Right.
If it's a one, it's a one, you know, hopefully they're cooperating and isolation at home for those fourteen days and track, but if it's a ten, twenty, so we, I think like that, giving some hints of it.
No, I got you. Mr. Mayor, my, my, hang on one second, my, my triggers are, recent kind of school district closes schools. That, I'm certainly going to close public, I mean, I would recommend to you all to do that. You know, uh, the governor's task force says, we recommend no more public meetings, more than a hundred people or whatever they, they always put a number on, then I would do the same. Because again, they have the paid professionals that do this for a career, and so I trust their judgment when it comes to that. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a scheduling reminder that Monday's, the first Monday of the month, we have planning commission meeting, the third Monday of the month.
But what are they meeting, it's eight and seven?
Uh, they meet at six.
Okay. Okay.
Board of Architecture Review, the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, that meeting, one is at five thirty, one's at six thirty, that's the third Monday of the month. So, we'll have one on the sixteenth.
So, you're recommending we don't meet at the same time?
Uh, we necessarily don't have a whole lot of business with the Board of Architecture Review, the Board of Zoning Appeals, but we do have some cases scheduled for, uh, next Monday. So, pointing that out, that Mondays are usually our meeting dates for boards and commissions, and not saying we can't have a meeting here and a meeting there, but just wanted to point it out.
And then that, the public is split in that case, and I don't like that, because if you wanted as a citizen to attend both, you couldn't. And speak at both, is what I'm referring to, comments about that, I mean. Can we meet earlier or later on Monday? Or now you're saying?
Board of Architecture Review started at five thirty, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I like Mondays at four, would be okay.
Nothing is on my Monday calendar right now.
You just tell the governor you're coming to your town council meeting, you don't understand.
So, I'm good right now.
Councilman Griffin, the elder, elder in the seat. Now, I didn't set him up like that, I was just pointing out, cause people can, that hear this can't, don't understand, you know, which one I'm talking to.
I, I don't have it like you guys.
I know, I know.
You got it, you got it better.
He's an important man, I know, I know it's all time is money.
You got it better.
What like is that?
Yes, sir, I mean, that's what we're, that's the consensus. All right, Mister Cook, four P M. on Monday, the sixteenth.
Here or you?
Yes, sir, here'd be fine, if that's good for you, if you have to call.
What would y'all prefer?
And that's kinda jammed in here, so if we wanna move.
We may, you know what, we may get more. He, once Miss Ball writes this information out there, she may attract more people based on her editing, you know, her wordsmithing. So, we might want, and they're gonna meet down there, right?
Uh, they're gonna meet in here, actually, so it'd be okay if you met at the manor.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
There's, there's no events, they were conflicted.
It's clean now.
I'll come help me wipe down the. It's clean now, my, my hands are shredding them all with flour.
We don't need to make a motion for that, do we? Call a special meeting, there's no action on that?
No, you just gotta advise the public. Is that right, that's right, Mister Cook, keep me straight.
Right, so as long as we get twenty four hour notice.
So. I mean, if you wanted to be safe, but see, if I call an emergency meeting, I'm not, we're not voting on that, like this one here.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
As long as we let the public know that we're gonna meet. And if I'm wrong, then Tanya and Barbara will say I'm wrong, when they publish their next part of it. No, I think that's fine. Let public know, that's all that.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments, any closing, open system comments?
I do have more there.
Okay.
Are you gonna post the results of this meeting on the website, like, you know, being proactive, here's what we're doing.
Yes. Yes.
Where's the camera?
Oh, it's right there, I'm sorry. Yes, this'll be one of our first ones, that, uh, I think we, you filmed the planning commission last month. The, again, the audio's not perfect, but we promised the citizens that we would do that, and, uh, Mister Sloan, Sloan Griffin ran on that, so I'm gonna make sure.
Right.
He's held accountable, so this will also be posted, and we're trying to get a venue like YouTube channel or whatever, but we'll let the public know, and there'll be a link to it. From our town website, so people can see it, cause as, if this continues to be worse, Lord forbid, if it does. People need to have access to what we're doing by looking at it online, and that's, that's kinda.
I understand that, maybe a synopsis or summary of like, you know.
Well, our town clerk does a great job with the minutes, and, uh, those are public records. This is gonna be posted, did I, did I miss something, did I say something wrong? Yes, it'll be. All right, any other comments, uh, legitimate comments this time, anybody? Yeah, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't hear anyone, um, get defined, um, areas of responsibility, so as a task force, I believe you should. Being a project manager by nature, that's kind of like where we exist in, and I haven't heard that, so it's important for me, because. I like to know what areas y'all are defining, so we can kinda know the next time we meet, cause I'm gonna be at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
To see exactly what the direction is in the research that is being done in the presentation.
Okay, great, our emergency management professional is Councilman Sloan Griffin, he is liaising with the governor's office. Um, so, right now, it's information gathering stage, this is my opinion, y'all can add or amend my comments as, as required. But then, when we meet Monday, we're gonna see the newest update from the state and cover that information and see what other further steps we need to do. Again, waiting on alert and advisory from the state D H E C as well as the President of the United States to see, and that's what our mission will be next Monday. But go ahead, because you wanted to, you did mention homework.
Yes, I said the homework piece for the project management side of it, uh, to, to. It's hard to really sit here in the onset, when everybody just become educated on some of the process and the things going on. And as things change rapidly, hopefully now the minds are woken up, uh, to start thinking about those triggers. When do we stop having events in town? When do we stop have, um, I think Columbia went to the mayor and two councilmen in the meetings now.
Yeah.
And then the public has to submit questions online, and you watch it, you know, so those things, when do we start? Um, distancing ourselves, uh, in social dis- distancing, um, techniques and things like that. So, that's what the trigger points are, you know, that's what we need to think. Mayor stated that, you know, Richland too, when they say, hey, we, we closed, that's his, you know, main trigger point. You know, and that is, that's a major trigger, but we don't wanna get to that point. Before we start doing things and moving objects along the way, so we don't want the schools to close, cause that mean then we. You know, we're at a total shutdown almost.
Right, right.
So, we do have homework moving forward.
Right, and, uh, the homework task I have as the mayor, with the, the town administrator and our manor administrator. Is, uh, to formalize the cleaning process, this is, again, the preparedness measures that we need to take right now. We need to immediately look at hiring somebody to come in after every event, and what that's gonna budget cost, and bring that back to the board. Uh, but I mean, you could do the first iterations of cleaning without this board's approval, cause you have to have authority as the manager of the manor. Uh, this building is already, Mister Cook's already instituted cleanliness, they clean all the time. Uh, we need to do the same for the manor, and we're also gonna look at the playground, cause we have kids out there right now as we speak, um, to start that process. So, that's gonna happen by, before Monday comes, we should have something back on that, if we can do, even if you do a short term bid. To say who can do this over the next five days, to give you time to do a longer term bid, you know, and we'll talk about that. Us three here at the administration, uh, and then also come back Monday and find out what other steps. Again, where the governor says we are, where we think we are from individual knowledge, looking at news, and then what other steps do we need to take? But thank you, that's, that's an excellent point.
One thing I'm gonna make sure I do too, and if it's, if it's within legal reasoning, I'm learning that now. I will send you guys some of the emails.
You pass all information. Disseminating information should be fine.
So, I will do that as long as it's not classified, um, I will send down those emails to you on information coming out.
Yeah, and it varies links, like the link right there that keeps the cases awesome.
Right, and Mister Cook knows to link that right immediately to the site, so everybody has access to that.
The ones I'm gonna send you do not link, if I send you a situation report, don't link that to the site. That's just, that's for the task force.
That's not, so it's not for public?
That's why I said I wanted to ask within reason.
Well, I ask them before you do that, because anything you send us, I want the same to go to the public, you know what I mean, I don't wanna like. Cause then you're set in a situation where we have to make decisions based on the governor's task force data. I just want to see what it is they're saying, so our citizens can, so if it doesn't meet that criteria, don't send it to us.
That's why I wanted to ask, so I'll break it down and send it out what can be put out.
Right, what can be put out is what I wanna see, and as much of it as we can get, so people have immediate, current, relevant information, so.
So, I think that's our homework, would be information gathering right now too. So, we can make better decisions Monday, would that be fair, is that a fair assessment? Mister S. Griffin?
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for coming on such short notice, thank you media, thank you employees for staying late, but obviously, this is out of our. Control to plan and determine this, but hopefully you all come back Monday and provide more, and it's very informative what we've done tonight. And, uh, I hope we'll continue to progress, and please monitor the news, if we need to call this meeting sooner than Monday, then we need to be prepared. Those of us here to do that, and we'll let everybody know within legal standards. All right, any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been probably motion and, and second to adjourn this meeting, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.